Let me, for those of you that haven't read Article Three recently, or Chapter Three, there is a great deal of specificity. And I'm just looking at how we could cut and paste and massage and tweak some of the requirements here. But you've got building design standards, you have facade standards, you have architectural design standards, you have fence, wall height transition, you have variation in massing, you have architectural design standards where you have to select from building types, old Florida, Mediterranean Revival, Mediterranean Revival Spanish versus Italian, modern contemporary, other styles, window standards, awning standards, detailed features including blank wall areas, out parcels, roof treatments. I mean, this is an extensive set of regs. And whether there's other items you want to capture, I didn't read all of them. We could, it would require a little bit more work than just to tweak such as the double dipping and the pre quote-unquote. We could incorporate a lot of this as a requirement at a PD. And that's going to force them while they get a bucket of uses, you're going to have to tell us how you're going to use that bucket. Rather than just, and if you change how you're going to use that bucket, you're going to need to amend your master concept plan. That is one possibility to consider over the next 90 days when you're chewing on where do we go with this. But I think Articles Three's design standards are really solid. When I compared design standards around the state, you can always, there's no perfect land development code, I haven't run into one yet. You could always add some additional diagrams and pictures, but as a, as a place to begin, it's pretty solid. It's just not in Article Four.
I think it's a worthwhile suggestion.
Anything else on design?
Do you have conventional zoning? Do we have design standards for that?
That's what they asked.
Pardon? Chapter Three? Yes. Right now applicability, commercial zoning districts, non-residential plan development districts, some residential districts, industrial districts, agricultural districts excluding single-family units and agricultural uses. And then you also have a set of regs that are in addition for building design standards for large-scale retail. And those capture primary facade, massing, et cetera. And if I remember right, and John, correct me, I think you were defining large-scale retail at 40,000 square feet, which is actually very low. For a lot of jurisdictions, large-scale retail is closer to 70,000 before they, because it's your big box, what folks are trying to capture a lot of times. So you've got a very low threshold for applying your large-scale retail. And then you've also got the highly 41, old 41 area as well.
One problem that I have with design review committees is that there's like a sameness of the product, and I think that's happening in Astero. So I think I would prefer to go through our own guidelines that we just articulate is because the developer can use them to give us kind of a variety of products so that we don't get a boring town and we don't all want to look like, you know, we come out of Tuscany or whatever.
But that's a policy call in Astero. They've decided they want to be monotone. It's not-
I know. I mean, I don't-
It's in the law, yeah. Mediterranean is in their law. I agree with you.
So we have-
It's not coming from the design review, it's coming from, they've made a policy call, we want everything to look-
So because we have those six or seven-
Yeah.
-different types, we already have a variety incorporated.
Right.
They don't have any flexibility at all?
Well, look what happened with Hertz. I don't want to get detoured a conversation here. But, you know, Hertz was like, oh my God. Somebody in Astero said to me, I got to tell you, when I heard about it, it's a beautiful building, but it sure ain't Mediterranean.
I'm not sure what it is.
Amy, there's actually a fifth category, other styles, in Chapter Three. And it says, "Upon request by the applicant, the city manager or designee may consider other architectural designs through an alternative betterment plan if the applicant can prove that such plan will accomplish the purpose and intent of this section."
Wow.
"All approved alternate style shall meet the standards of applicability and appropriateness for its location, et cetera." You've got a good-
Yeah, it sounds like we're pretty well covered.
Yeah, you're looking at-
So have we not applied, is that why we've run into difficulty?
I can't answer that question. But you have a good, almost 20 pages of regs on architectural design and style in Chapter Three. But we could, if direction over the next 90 days is to roll some of this into the PD, we could certainly look at doing so.
The more it's been about PD, the more information we'll get when we're making those specifics.
Yes.
The more so we can get, the more directly it is.
But the tension you're going to get, and the pushback you're going to get from the property owner or the person who's got the property under control is, I want flexibility and you're interfering with my ability to have maximum flexibility. And I think the city's response to that is, we want responsible development now, we don't want land sitting with entitlements, with a bucket of uses that we don't know what's going to take place there. And I think those are your two poles that you're going to be dealing with. Anything else on architectural? We're going through this a lot quicker than I anticipated.
We're going to miss our lunch.
All right, let me change topics. Easy one for me, because I love them, neighborhood meetings. Unless I missed it, I didn't see anything in your code that requires neighborhood meetings. And I am a huge fan of neighborhood meetings, both from a local government perspective, a neighbor perspective, and a developer perspective. I think they accomplish a lot. And I think they should be mandatory. It's one of the few things today that I'm going to make a solid recommendation, say, I think neighborhood meetings should be mandatory. In fact, every land development code that I've drafted statewide, I have required neighborhood meetings in the land development code for all development. And I'll get into some of the mechanics. Without neighborhood meetings, what typically takes place is, the neighbors don't know there's been an application submitted unless you have a process where neighbors are notified when applications are submitted. I've done that as well. And the first time they really hear about the new development is when the sign goes up on the property.
If they see it.
If they see it. And depending on whether or not you've got good regs, I've had signs in all kinds of places, or they suddenly disappear the day after they're installed. So a lot of times it's a week, 10 days before the public hearing, and the neighbors are finding out that there is a commercial PD that's being proposed for this project, or for this property. And they fill in the blank with the worst thing they can think of, because there's no information. And in fact, with the PD language that you have, I think that's a fair thing to do, because there is no specificity, they don't know what they're going to get. But if we tighten that up a little bit, we can alleviate that. But what I've seen with neighborhood meetings early on in the process, and I would recommend two tweaks. I would recommend that mailed notice goes out when an application is submitted. That helps level the playing field, or you do a sign, but something to put the neighbors on notice earlier than later that, hey, something's going on with this piece of property, you might want to get plugged in on what's going on. So you can call up staff, or call up your city council folks and say, hey, what's going on on this piece of property? And then a neighborhood meeting very early on, either before the application, I recommend before the application. If you do it after the application, the neighborhood meeting is perfunctory. You're just meeting with me, you've already filed your application, I already know what you're asking for, so you're meeting with me to jump through the hoop to say that you held a neighborhood meeting. A real neighborhood meeting to do it right, when I'm representing developers, here's our concept. This is what we're thinking about doing. My dumpster's going to be over here, my multifamily building's going to be over here, my restaurant's over here, and I'll have some, not the detailed construction drawings, but I'll have a pretty rendering or two that gives them an understanding of what I'm asking for. And I'll ask for their feedback. You will never get, especially if you're dealing with a HOA, you'll never get 100% agreement. I represent HOAs, I like to joke, I can't get 100% of the membership to say, the sun comes up in the east. You're just never going to get 100%. But you'll get 95% if you do your neighborhood meetings well, and you're not trying to do the 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. You'll get 95% buy-in if you work with the neighbors. Maybe they don't like where the fence is, maybe they want a fence, maybe it's where the dumpster is, and they're worried about the 6 o'clock pickup by waste management, or whatever the waste company is down here. And you can hash out some of those details. The other thing you can hash out is you fill in the blank with your project, so that they're not thinking, oh my God, this is going to be the worst thing that we've ever heard of. They get a visual on the, my guy spent over a million dollars getting development approval on this project on 30A. We had multiple neighborhood meetings, we even started a website so people could see our plans, so that we controlled the narrative of the story of what was coming, instead of folks not knowing and starting their own narrative and doing a petition to oppose the commercial project that's coming before they even know what it is. So I'm a huge fan of neighborhood meetings. And see if they can hammer out some of those design things. Sometimes you just have to agree to disagree on certain issues. But you can get a lot of little stuff, at least the low-hanging fruit resolved before you even file. But if you require after they file, or maybe you can do it before and after, but I think it's really crucial that it's before, because I've been in neighborhood meetings where if you do it after, you're not, you're not going to change what you've already submitted. You're checking the box. So there's that. The other concern with neighborhood meetings is, once you do that first one, if the project changes substantially, there's got to be another neighborhood meeting, because the neighbors feel like there was bait and switch. They may have stood down when they saw the renderings during the first neighborhood meeting, and it was a two-story building, and now we've compressed it to a six-story building and more open space, but they signed off on a two-story, and they show up at the planning commission meeting, and like, what the heck? This isn't what we saw at the neighborhood meeting, and it blows up. So if there's a substantial change in the design of the project or the uses in the project, I recommend that there is a follow-up neighborhood meeting to keep the neighbors in the loop, so they don't feel like they stood down and now the developer did a bait and switch. Couple of policy calls, whether a city council member, a zoning board member, or a city staff member should attend the neighborhood meeting. And I've seen it done both ways, where they do and they don't. One of the difficulties for staff, if, especially if it's a neighborhood meeting before the application has been submitted, and you want staff to go to be able to hear what's taking place, is it's pre-application, and they're going to be nailed with questions by the neighbors on something they haven't even seen yet. So it almost puts them in a really difficult spot, and it's going to happen, they're going to be asked, what's the setback? What's the requirement for a height of the fence? What's the C2 requirements? And sometimes that actually takes away from the give and take between the neighbors and the developer in resolving issues, and starts turning, putting the focus on city staff to start talking about the design criteria or the regulations. Same thing can happen with a zoning board member or a city council member, where you'll get kind of put in a posture of, gee, do you like this? Do you not like this? You may get folks basically posturing to try to get the support of a board member or a city council member. I'm typically inclined to recommend that the city staff, the zoning board, and the city council member not attend the neighborhood meeting, that it's truly a meeting between the neighbors and the applicant to try to resolve issues, generate goodwill, fill in the blanks. And then put a burden on the applicant as part of the application's submittal requirements to provide a sign-in sheet and a summary of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors. And sometimes I've even had a requirement that they state in that summary how the applicant is going to address those concerns, if at all. Applicant has the right to say, we're not going to, or can say, we've done this, this, and this. So as you probably can tell, I really like neighborhood meetings. I had one where we had 27 meetings with the neighbors. It was a massive project in Walton County, and we had a five-minute quasi-judicial hearing at the county commission. Nobody showed up, and we had letters of approval from the neighbors, because they already knew what they were getting, and my guy had addressed their issues. I've had the flip side too. Yes, ma'am?
How do you define neighborhood?
There is not a geographical area that I would specifically state. If you have a subdivision that's next to the piece of property, I wouldn't just say 300 feet in, because then you're going to carve out other people in the subdivision. I tend to be overbroad on my neighborhood meeting notice. I want more people there, so that I can tell my story. And if I don't have more people there, then I run into that concern of other people filling in the blank, and I'm going to get opposition.
So does your venue follow me that some, where in whom is this?
You work around it. I've done it with a tent on the property. I've done it on renting locations.
And that would be the responsibility of the applicant, not the town?
Not at all. Sole responsibility of the applicant.
David, as far as Jennings or Isaac Walton, and you mentioned not having his people from city council or zoning board, do you want to touch on the issues of ex parte, as well as, and we had this issue come up very early, as far as voting process. As a voting process, you'd have to own more than 1% to meet the state statute on ethics. So that's virtually an issue as far as neighborhoods, if you're able to say, the neighborhood is an issue. But David, if you want to reach, sort of approach that group for a few seconds.
I can talk about ex parte. I actually have a bumper sticker, "Ex-Party Happens."
Y'all have a provision in your, I think it's Article Two perhaps, that under 286, you waive the ex-party communication issue under the state statute. I still question whether the state statute is constitutional. I don't think the Florida legislature can waive a due process concern. And nobody has challenged it yet. I had it in a case that settled, so I didn't get a decision on it. So there is still the possibility that if somebody challenges your ex-party communications, that, and your reliance of the protection of 286 that you've adopted, there is the possibility that a court would say that 286 is unconstitutional, and that you had inappropriate ex-party communications. Ex-party communications range from a phone call, you're in line at the grocery store, and you've got your milk and bread, and somebody starts bending your ear, and there's nowhere for you to go other than to listen. Emails, phone calls, a site visit is ex-party, because you're obtaining information outside of the quasi-judicial hearing. And the Jennings case states that ex-party communications, and those are communications that occur prior to the quasi-judicial hearing, that they are presumed prejudicial. Not maybe prejudicial, they are presumed to be prejudicial. And the plaintiff who is suing doesn't have the burden of proving prejudice. The city has the burden of proving that they weren't prejudicial. So there is potential exposure there. What a lot of local governments do is say, well, disclose your ex-party communications during the city council meeting or the zoning board meeting. And when you read the case law, the case law talks about a real disclosure. I met with John Smith, and we talked about X. And I'm able to base my decision today solely on what I hear. What a lot of local governments simply do is, did you have any ex-party communications? Yes. Can you vote fairly? And there's not a disclosure of what the communication was. And sometimes, the example I use, I wrote a book for APA on quasi-judicial hearings and variances. And one of the examples I use is a neighbor tells a city council person that there's a bald eagle nest on the property. I'm an avid birder, and I'm on, if I'm going to be on the council and there's a bald eagle on the property, I'm going to raise some feathers. Sorry. And if it's an ex-party communication, you might vote against that application, because you don't want the eagle nest to be disturbed. Well, the applicant has had a due process violation, because you're voting on something that the applicant doesn't know. And there's also the possibility that the person who said it's a bald eagle is actually an osprey, it's not a bald eagle. And so the whole concept of due process in a quasi-judicial hearing is that everybody is supposed to know everything that the board's going to base his or her decision on. And that's why you have to have a full disclosure of what ex-party communications are. So I met with the mayor, and the mayor and I discussed that there were wetlands on the property, and I was concerned about the fact that there were endangered species. And Mr. Mayor, can you base your decision today on the evidence that you hear today? Yes. That's a full disclosure under Jennings. Not simply, did you have any? Can you vote fairly? So-
I have a question about that. Go back to your bald eagle. If you've heard from this person that's a bald eagle, is it kosher then to ask the staff to investigate that and make it available to everyone? Is that kind of knowledge, if you have it investigated, made available to everyone?
There's a couple of ways of doing it. If it's a letter or email that's sent to you, I have it put in the file, so that the public, one of the things I do when I'm challenging development, I do a public records inspection request, you see everything in the file, before I walk into a quasi-judicial hearing. And so if you got the email, if you got a letter, if you had a phone call, if you really want to be detailed about it, what I recommend to some local governments, if you had a phone call, just kick out a quick memo, email to the file, have it put in the file. I spoke with Jane, and she told me about the bald eagle. I asked staff to look into it. That way, in the public file, is a disclosure of your ex-party communication.
I'd like to just make one comment about the ex-party, because we had a pretty rigorous conversation on our council a year or so ago about ex parte. But my concern with it isn't as much the technicalities, which I agree with you, as a lawyer are important, it's the reality of it, the human reality of it, which is, if I meet with somebody and they convince me of stuff, I'm talking about in total good faith, they can, a person convinces me of something, it makes a lot of sense, and I meet again, and I'm working stuff out, I think it makes a lot of sense, all right? What happens in my head is, as a normal human being, I've worked this through, I think I know what makes sense for this decision, okay? Here's what I think is the risk we run. I know it's the risk we run. What happens is, when that happens, and I'm not saying people are entitled to talk ex parte, when that happens, those people are bought in, appropriately bought in, in reality, okay? Then comes the hearing. And what happens at the hearing is, everything that should happen at the hearing, right? Especially if we revise our process, more facts come in, other facts come in. And human nature being what it is, is like, I've already made my decision, now I'm kind of being asked to reverse my decision. And those things that were intended to be in one collegial body, in a consensus decision-making, where everybody is filtering and talking and processing, okay, now become to me kind of threats to the decision I've already made. And that stinks as a dynamic in any consensus-making body. And that's my concern with it.
It's a legitimate concern.
Yeah.
The other example I use when I'm doing ex-party communication stuff, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, it's not legislative. When you're doing legislative, that's when you're adopting regs, you're adopting a comp plan amendment, unless it's small scale, that's legislative. You can talk to whomever you want, you can have site visits, there's no prohibition on ex-party communications. When you get to the quasi-judicial, keep in mind judicial, it's not completely judicial, it's quasi. So to the extent you're ever wondering, where should I fall on this issue? If you were in court, would you want the other side having private meetings with the judge? No. Would you want the other side calling the judge without you being there? And that's essentially the same parallel that I draw with quasi-judicial hearings, when you are deciding whether an applicant will be approved or denied for a particular piece of property. You are a finder of fact, and you are sitting in the same role as a judge. So to the extent you have a question, a lot of people have a hard time when I tell them site visits are technically ex-party. There's a way to do a site visit. A lot of jurisdictions will notice that the city council on Tuesday are going to go to the site, they're going to take a look at it, they're not going to communicate while they're there, and when they go back to the city council meeting, they'll disclose if they saw anything that may affect their decision. I saw, it looks like the site triangle for the driveway is a little bit dangerous, or there's a big curve there, how's the traffic going to be there? Are those wetlands? So that you put on the record for the applicant and the neighbors, issues that you think were important for your decision.
We are, given a small town like this though, so many of us have done that, if we went to the site visit, because if we were here and you've seen it as you go by, so it's almost impossible to get a group that could be, you know, devoid of any knowledge. And the second point I wanted to make was that, when you say that we're a quasi-judicial board that makes findings of facts, that's why we need to change these regulations, so that the facts come to us, so that we can make decisions based on those.
Agreed.
Because otherwise, we're pretending we're a quasi-judicial body, when we really aren't. We don't have the ability to make the decisions based on that.
Agreed.
One middle ground here is to throw off people who are not talking, who are on this council, who totally disagree with this. I think, from their personal point of view, that's my job, I'm a council member, I should be out there talking to people, and there shouldn't be a difference between the situation that's a zoning versus anything else. And I disagree with that view, but I respect it. Maybe a middle ground on zoning issues is, when people have ex parte meetings, have them with staff.
Well, staff could be ex parte also.
I understand that, I understand that. But in other words, staff knows about the zoning matter, so then there's more of a record created, it's done with staff, and those who want to find out ahead of time. So you're talking about Jennings, but we've been told in this forum that Jennings is just one district, it's not the law of Florida, that's what our council's been advised.
Yeah, that was Smith, we clear with, well, with Jennings.
No, with Jennings, all right. If Smith, we clear, or, it's totally different. So I think a way to accommodate the different views on this council could be something like that. I don't know if people think about it, but-
Well, one-
Then we have, sorry.
I thought you were done, go ahead.
I'm done.
No, I have an issue with ex parte, and one of the things is that I just get this feeling that there might be sort of accommodations or bargains that are made with the other council people, and I would like to know what their discussions are. So even if they do choose to have ex partes, can we get information about what goes on? Are there transcripts of that?
No, they're not transcripts. Really, the only way you're going to do that, that's a one-on-one or a one on the neighbors.
Right.
Because, please tell me you don't have multiple city council members having ex party at the same time.
No.
Then we got a whole-
No, 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 it's one-on-one and-
And what you could do is ask that council member to do a memo or an email to the file describing what was said.
Because I would feel more comfortable if I was aware of what went on, you know, the gist of it. And I just, when I first got on the council, I did a few of them, and I just felt that it was really not a good process, you know, because these, it seems like there were negotiations going on, and I didn't think it was proper. So I don't know if that's continuing, because I haven't done it, you know, for like a year and a half, or a year and three quarters, well, more than two years now. Because I want everybody to know what I know and how I know it, and I don't want any bargains being made, you know, any accommodations. That's just my own feeling.
And I've seen it done the full spectrum, even in the city. As Peters indicates, some people will meet, some people won't. I've seen jurisdictions where everybody will meet, and I've seen jurisdictions where they like to be able to say, my lawyer tells me I can't talk with you, blame your lawyer, so that they don't get pigeonholed. And it's really only an issue if you're sued. If nobody sues you, 30 days pass, and we don't have to worry about it. But if you approve a project, and the neighbors believe that there were extensive ex-party communications that weren't properly disclosed, that's one of the bullets, you just gave the neighbor's attorney to take a shot at your decision. If you deny a project, and I'm representing the applicant, and I found out that there are extensive ex-party communications by the neighbors, he just gave me a bullet to shoot it with a dial. One of my philosophies when I represent local government is removing bullets, so that I can protect your decision. I don't, nine times out of 10, I don't care what your decision is, that's your call. But my job is to remove bullets to make sure that if you're sued, that decision stands. And so one of the, I look at ex parte as one of the vulnerabilities that I may have to overcome. And there are two types of lawsuits that can be brought- And there are two types of lawsuits that can be brought on ex parte. One, people can bring a petition for writ of certiorari, which is appellate in nature, and say that the essential requirements of the law and due process were violated. Typically, though, you'll bring a declaratory judgment action because ex parte communications, by their nature, were off the record. And the courts have allowed you to bring a DECA, a Genovale action, challenging the local government, being would have full discovery, not based upon the record at the quasi judicial hearing. I can get your emails, I can get your text messages. In fact, one of the lawsuits I had about five years ago, I caught two council members communicating with each other via text regarding my client's project they settled. But that's what opens the door, the litigation, if there's that potential, with the ex parte communications. Anything else with neighborhood meetings? Do you like them? Was that a collective... Yes, sir.
Well, I only comment on the neighborhood meetings. I think they probably would be a good idea. I don't know how familiar you are with our community here, but so many of our neighborhoods, of course, down here are gated, so that may be a problem. And there's a lot of apathy within the gated communities. What happens on the outside of the gates, they don't really care about. And I think that's generally true, I think that's a fairly true statement. The other issue that we have is, depends on who you ask, but two-thirds of our people are gone. The roads are empty this morning. We don't have a traffic problem, by the way, in Benita Springs. I didn't notice anything, did I? But you take, council's taking care of it. Thanks, Peter. Two-thirds of our people are gone in the summer. And so, you have to be careful, I would think, when you have these meetings. It's not always convenient to have them, though, what we call in season. It's probably different, maybe, where in Tallahassee. But down here, it's very seasonal. And so, if you have the neighborhood meetings without the majority of the people being here, that's going to create a whole series of problems, I believe.
Agreed.
Well, and to that point, you know, I can't give you a specific, and I'm not trying, you know, but there's been the thought, the school of thought, well, let's wait until the summer to put a process, a project through. So, nobody's around, right?
That happens.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And as a local government, I would never advocate delay. But sometimes, meeting schedules and commission schedules and people's availability to show up is difficult during the summer, and it gets pushed to the fall. But that's...
I like the neighborhood meeting, I think.
Yeah. What are you saying, theory?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Just checking.
I was going to make... I think the neighborhood meeting is a good idea, and Roger, maybe people will start to pay more attention, right? Maybe we can turn that corner. I agree with Roger's observations on that. The only other thing I'd say is, we have had a neighborhood meeting on one of the major issues in Benita has to do with something up on the line between Astero and Benita. That neighborhood meeting was in Astero, under Astero's rules, with respect to a project in Benita. And hundreds of people showed up at Living Waters Church to hear a presentation about the Benita project. It had to do with the technicalities of Astero law, so even though it was under Benita's jurisdiction. So, I thought, it's pretty interesting. Hundreds of people showed up, and it wasn't our process, it was Astero's process.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm not sure what it was.
The other thing about making this a general rule, that it seems to me, we might well consider, is it's one thing when it's a big project or a controversial one, the neighborhood meetings would be useful, but you're just adding a layer if you don't clarify that all projects have to do this. Because, you know, a small local thing that nobody's particularly interested in, just, I think, puts them through another phase with the developers still, you know, which is going to be accomplished. I don't know, having participated also in front of the board in one of these kinds of situations, in the zoning board, and in front of, and at the neighborhood meetings, which were at the back, so they weren't accomplishing what you pointed out, they're doing something. I'm not exactly certain what was accomplished by this other meeting, except that a lot of people got the yellow screen. I didn't see much real communication going on at all, either way. So, if you're going to do something like this, it would have to be going into it with the developer's side of, I really want to listen, I really want to do something, rather than I have to check the box. And how you get to that, other than maybe finding your clients or something?
And it varies. You're going to have developers that are going to be on both sides of that coin. And I've had exactly what you talked about. I've had some that have gone in, and they really wanted to listen to what the neighbors had to say, took it to heart, and I've had others that said, I'm required to jump through this box, get me through this box so I can check it. And I think that's a mistake, but, and the size will sometimes surprise. You know, I've had them on major projects. I've also had a neighborhood meeting on a dumpster, on a restaurant, and that was the dumpster example that I used. People were really concerned, they had a condominium building on one side, and they were worried about where we were going to put our dumpster. And we were able to resolve, in a fence, we did a vegetated buffer as well. So, sometimes it surprises you that it's not necessarily the little stuff that doesn't get caught.
Ross, did you have a...
I'm Fred's arm.
Oh.
He's left in Fred's...
No, no, no.
Fred.
All I was going to say on...
Fred and Fred's arm.
There you go. On neighborhood meetings, in fact, without being more specific, we're kind of involved in a legal tanglement on one of them, but that is an example of what neighborhood meetings should have happened on. Because the city council, I think the mayor was on it, but there was very little communication with Pelican Landing about what was going to go on with the comp plan amendment and zoning. In fact, Vice Mayor or Deputy Mayor and I were attending discussions with people out there, and there was almost no knowledge of the people that would normally raise a lot of H if they knew what was going on, as what was going on. Once they woke up to it, which I think was about the time the comp plan had cleared the LPA...
February 6th.
Then all heck broke loose, resulting in a meeting of city council that broke up at 1:00 in the morning, where the comp plan amendment was voted down, and then zoning was postponed and all that kind of stuff. So, I think neighborhood meetings are good, and I think that, my perception is, I think the guy that's trying to work on that week's fish camp is at least trying to go more that way, because they don't have any hard things down yet, and they're getting inputs from different people, different communities, I believe. I have not been to any of those meetings, so I can't say, but I've, that's my understanding of it, so.
So, could we leave that for, if we're going to have a committee or take away that and this ex parte, maybe halfway ramp or something?
Well, on ex parte, here's the thing. It's a two-way street, because when you're talking about all this disclosure, about the talking to developers and all that, which is fine, it's the other side. Because most of these projects that people get, I call it fuzzed up about, there's a lot of community opposition, some of it is lack of proper information of what the project really is, and they come out of the woodwork to contact everybody on this council that they know. Sometimes it's an email, sometimes phone calls. As David said, sometimes it's you're in a supermarket, and they just let you have it, whether you want it or not. So, there is that other side of the issue. And that's just, you can get in as much trouble, as you've said, on that side as the other side.
Absolutely. My remarks about ex parte pertain to both developer and the neighbors. It's, doesn't matter who's giving you the information outside the record.
It's pretty hard to tell voters, though, if they can't contact their elected representatives. I think that would be really undercut the whole notion of that.
Not really.
So, about the only way you could do that is to just make that information public, make it part of the file.
Yeah, I disagree with that strongly. In other words, if people want to approach a judge, he tells them, I'm sorry, come to my courtroom.
But he's not a...
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, as an elected representative, I don't have an issue saying to someone, look, our process is, this is quasi judicial, and what I'd invite you to do is come to council and talk about it. What is troublesome, and which makes it impractical, is, and I'm not, just the reality, if you have some people on council who are absolutely, I want to hear what you have to say, then I'm in a very difficult situation. And that's basically the situation I'm in now.
One of the things that strikes me that's very difficult is error of communication, where they can send you an email, and they send the...
Then you send it in.
Part of the whole process of...
Right.
So, the government I came from did not allow any ex parte communication whatsoever. And they used to have a letter, the attorney would send out the letter, saying, hey, we see you tried to contact so-and-so, Commissioner Judah, that's the name. This is against our provisions, here's our provision. If you continue to do so, we roll over the case to the state attorney's office. Now, that was a draconian type of letter. Citizens really did not like when they received one of those letters.
And thank you for raising that, because today, you cannot call a lead county commissioner and talk to a lead county commissioner about a zoning matter. They will not take your call. Now, I'm not suggesting that's going to work here, because we have different views, I'm just trying to get to a more middle ground.
But, I mean, that's where I came from. You know, if you didn't have the evidence in front of the hearing examiner, you were not allowed to present evidence afterwards. It applied to cities too, because when we represented, when Simon Setco was building them all, we wanted to have new evidence introduced, and it was almost unheard of, but I was able to get it in, and it was almost, you know, the attorney's not ready to kill me while doing so. Well, and it was, because it was very adversarial at that point. And that is a process, I mean, again, that's a policy call, because you are trying to balance access to public officials. But one of the things that we worry about as attorneys, whether it's me or David, because we want to defend whatever decision you guys come up with, whether we like the decision or not, that doesn't matter, it's policy. What we want to do is be able to defend it to our death, and the easiest way, of course, is to have a black and white rule, one way or another. The thing that scares me, probably scares David, is when elected officials choose who they want to hear from, whether it's only the applicant, and they don't want to hear from the citizens, it's a different district, I'm not going to worry about them, or alternatively, they only want to hear from the citizens, because that's the one that, an applicant, if they get it on the record, that that's what's happening. There's a case before Jennings, called Isaac Walton, and that's the question, whether or not the person had a fair hearing, a fair due process. And at that point, you draw it into debate, then you go back to either ground zero or that's it, because I guess the court can order them.
Decision's squashed.
So, the decision is squashed, and it makes everybody pretty much miserable.
Peter, can I suggest a takeaway, which is to try to find a middle ground on this? Does that make sense?
I think so.
I'll sell you my bumper sticker.
That will help the problem.
All right. Want to move on? Another topic that you all asked me to look at, and this is one, everything we've talked about today, because I've been doing this for about 30 years, and I've seen all three sides on it, and I feel really comfortable working through it. One area that I'm not an expert, I don't have extensive expertise on, is stormwater regulations. So, what I started with was the premise, does the city have the legal authority to go beyond what the water management district requires? In fact, I thought DEP had preempted that, and it has not. What I'm sharing with you is the results of our research. I can't, this is not the result of 30 years of practice, but our looking at the case law and looking at the statutory framework. And I think there are two issues that I saw with stormwater. One is, can you have standards beyond the water management district? Can you have retention that's greater? Can you have elevations that are greater? Yes. It surprised me, and I think the law clearly gives the city the home rule authority to exceed the requirements of the water management district. And so, that becomes a policy call, and it also becomes an engineering call. So, to the extent you have questions about, how do you exceed those regulations? I'm deferring to John, because that's way out of my expertise. I had to look up the difference between a 25-year, 24-hour design storm event instead of a 25-year, 72-hour design storm. I'm not an engineer. So, it's a little bit Greek to me on what it means to exceed. I did review the Beaver report, and he recommended, as one of the alternatives, to also increase, I think it was your volume retention, that the 100-year flood elevations do not increase anywhere in the impacted watershed upstream or downstream of the new development, and then using the 25-year, 24-hour design storm event, which is stricter than the water management district. So, to the extent that you all are looking holistically at what to do with stormwater issues, you do have legal authority to do more. The other issue that we looked at was how to fund it. If you want to get into the business of handling stormwater citywide, and I know you're looking at different areas for potential retention basins, and it also surprised me, because, again, I haven't dealt with this, you have the legal authority to impose stormwater utility fees. And it's clear, under Section 403.0891 Florida statutes, that local governments can develop stormwater programs that are compatible with those developed by DEP. There's an old wrinkle to that, that appears that if you go that route, you have to submit your ordinance to DEP to ensure that it's compatible with what DEP is doing. Not that you're, you can still exceed, but just that you're not doing anything inconsistent with theirs. And you have the right to use a utility fee, much like you use a water fee or a sewer fee. And you can use that fee to fund conveyance systems, retention areas, and the maintenance of those retention areas. So, to the extent you all are looking at funding sources to do so, in light of the incredible flooding that you've had over the last year, you do have a couple of tools. Most of the utility fee approaches that I saw in the case law, they typically had a carve-out for somebody who does not, it didn't apply to undeveloped or unaltered land, or to property that has prevented its runoff from leaving the property. So, there was two exceptions that you don't capture, basically undeveloped land, or somebody who's doing 100% retention at some standard. And the law also requires a reasonable benefit, a reasonable relationship, between the amount of the fee and the value of the service, the benefit that the property owner is getting. So, yes, ma'am.
I have a question about retention, because you say 100% retention, doesn't that require establishing some kind of a standard? I mean, is that a 100-year one thing, or... Because you can't do 100% retention, because it changes depending on what kind of storm you have, isn't that true?
Yes, it does. So, it would...
So, you have to do both?
I think so, yes.
So, like, I have a concern about adopting, because so many of the gated communities have some stormwater management systems that are essentially islands, you know, and we have it somehow connected. So, I didn't know how we could integrate utility fees with what has already been done for certain communities. Do we exclude those, or do we...
I think the question on those is, you would need an engineer to look at their system and confirm that they are not adding water into the city's stormwater. That basically, and I don't know what design of that, because that's, I like the joke, I didn't stay at the Holiday Inn Express last night. That's way beyond me, I just don't know that. But you would determine what storm event you're using to determine your user fee, and if they're not having water coming off-site, then you could exempt them. If they're having water coming off-site, then you can look at including them in the user fee at some level.
If they were discharging into a city facility or city store water system?
Right.
If they're discharging into the bay, then that's a treat, and then after it's been treated, then it goes into the bay?
Right. I'm looking at conveyance and retention that the city would own.
And quite frankly, on stormwater, like you said, really what the city, I mean, this is policy, but they should be looking at fees, assessments, and adware as a combination for all three, because they all have pros and cons. We talked about that before.
And I'd just add one thing to Amy's point.
And I'd just add one thing to Amy's point. It's a few months ago, more than a few months ago, so Arlene, Matt and I were, had a meeting with Bill Moss, who was the city manager in Naples, and his number-two person, and we talked about that issue. And it's, the issue being, what about the gated communities that have their own stormwater system? And the answer is that it's not a black and white thing. It's a feathering in where there are certain credits, but it's not like nothing is paid. So there's a balancing, and that balancing comes through the details of what the engineers say, et cetera, et cetera. So just something to add.
That makes sense.
That's what they do.
Back to the stormwater fee. No, no, go ahead.
From the zoning board perspective, Article 4 says, I think it's Article 4, that says that in a planned development, if it's not a major, they don't have to tell us anything, basically about stormwater management currently. Second, if it's a major, they have to tell us. But basically, they tell us about as much as they're telling us about the rest of the thing. It seems to me that this is an unimportant subject, and whether you go beyond, whether you go beyond southwest stormwater, even to do, this is a major concern, it seems to me, that where government can do something positive to protect people who already built, came to our city and invested money, and now we're looking at future development and ignoring them, I mean, I think it's a big issue. And I don't see where the current law allows us to do very much to help people.
I'm... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Also, we have code, the code was written mostly prior to changes in Florida statutes once in 2030, I think it was 2030, which is the state statute that says you cannot require them to go through the Water Management District first, or DEP, or jurisdiction. But here, South Florida Water Management is our normal. You can't require them to go through and have those provisions first before you go through zoning or development approval. Now, I think our own code would do.
What you have for, at least in the code, whether it's, how it's playing out, because I was looking up there, I looked at this when I was reading Article 4. Additional required information for all major planned development zoning, a written decision, a written description of a surface water management plan that includes the runoff characteristics of the property in its existing state, in general terms, the drainage concept proposed, including the outfall of the canals or natural water bodies, including how drainage flows from adjacent properties will be maintained, the retention features, including existing natural features that will be incorporated into the drainage system, and the legal mechanism which will guarantee their maintenance, and how existing natural features will be preserved, and if the property is subject to seasonal inundation or subject to inundation by a stream swollen by the rains of a 100-year storm event, indicate the measures that will be taken to mitigate the effects of expectable flooding.
Right. John?
Yes, sir. We're combining several different reviews, and we've kind of touched on all of them. When it comes to the zoning, you're exactly right. Most of the time, what happens is someone will go through and they'll receive a planned development zoning, they will then submit to the Water Management District for properties that are either over two acres of impervious space or over 10 acres in total, and that will require a permit from the district. For those that are under that threshold, we would permit them through a development order. Historically, zoning would be approved, they would then spend the money on the engineering, the engineering would be designed, and the development order would then be submitted either simultaneous or just following the Water Management District permit. Because changes in the district permit would be expensive to fix on a development order. Audrey's correct, there is not, we do not have the authority to require someone to go through state permitting prior to us processing a local permit. So if someone chooses, regardless of what we do with our regulations, if somebody chooses to pursue, most of the time it's an environmental resource permit with the Water Management District after zoning or after a development order, they have the right to do that, they just would not be able to start construction until that was given. So what I think, I've gone a very long way around to come back to the point of, we currently have a standard for an additional 50% of water storage for quality. What I think everybody has seen is, one, that has done nothing essentially to address quantity, and, two, we are surrounded by areas, a couple of places I know Collier County has, has modified the standards over what the district has in terms of discharge. So it is appropriate, and I think we would recommend you look at how you handle that water management standard, because I think we should increase how we handle it above and beyond what the minimum standards of the districts are, realizing that there will be a state permit that's issued probably after our zoning approval is given. So you may see somebody come back to modify a zoning approval because they have poorly timed their application. That should not stop us from changing our standard.
John, is it fair to say, though, that as the law sits today, and as we practice it, that at the zoning and city council levels, there's very little that's disclosed with regard to water management?
Correct. There have been applications from people who have gone above and beyond. But the minimum standard is the minimum standard, and that theory, I've read it correctly, it's a narrative on a major planned development. It is not a plan, it is an area.
And I just want to add, and while John is up here, he can explain it a little bit better, the Water Strategy Task Force did make a recommendation to have a higher standard. It went to council, council wanted to defer at the ordinance. I don't know if anybody ever wants to bring it back. But that was to increase capacity onsite.
In my one year of purgatory on that, that so-called big deal, they were saying they want to recommend the current standard for both retention and water quality in Benita is one and a half inches where the rest of South Florida Water Management, unless the local jurisdiction has a higher, is one inch. The big deal was, they were going to go 10%, which I said that was a damn poor joke. That's an eighth of an inch more water? That's nothing. And so if you want to talk about things, you want to look at much more significant numbers than that. 10% isn't going to get you much of anything. And there's probably that much error in the engineer's calculations. So it was a poor joke.
Well, you know, to talk about a poor joke, I was, our daughter had her prom Saturday night. Well, proms have changed quite a bit since when we were kids, but be that as it may. You had a couple hundred, well, probably, yeah, a couple hundred kids, there was a pre-party, a couple hundred kids, I don't know, 100 parents, there was a lot of us, right? You get talking to people that you don't even know. Oh, you're so-and-so, you know, father, daughter, mother, whatever the case was. Oh, you're from Benita Springs, oh, yeah, you're the mayor, yep, 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 yep. You know, people don't even know. People that have lived here four, five, six generations, some of these people I meet. How'd you handle the hurricane down there? Well, you had both arms tied behind your back. Well, what do you mean? Traditionally, over the years, it's been a cognizant effort, look, conspiracy theory, call it what you want, I'm just telling you about what I heard at a prom party this past Saturday night, right? They have traditionally sent water, they, I guess, you know, define it, have sent water your way to Benita Springs. There was nobody ever there, the standards were lax, you were run by the county, there were no people there, there has been a longstanding pattern of sending water to Benita Springs. Very loose, very open, very, I get it, you know, all that, but we're talking about it. Is there a way, if there was even a grain of truth in that, to go back, look at what the forefathers and foremothers, whatever we want to call them, on the county and state and city level to cure history? Or am I talking about a radical what-if?
Yes.
But here we are, so...
Yes.
Yes, yes, what?
Both.
Yes, it's a radical whatever, but...
Yes. But you also have the report from Jim Beaver, and the benefit of that report was, it identified watersheds, it identified where water is currently flowing in a generic standpoint, it also identified where it flew, flowed historically. So you have the general data, going back and trying to revise how the water flows in that direction, yes, it's a radical shift, but it doesn't mean it's a shift that shouldn't be made. I think that you have a number of topics associated with this that you need to address. How do you store water on property? What's the elevation of buildings on property? How do you discharge water from the property? How do you handle it once it's off the property? Once you handle it off the property is just what you identify. Where does it flow historically? How does it work its way to the Gulf? Because essentially, all of it works its way to the Gulf. And where does it flow to get there? So it is appropriate, and it is timely.
Right. So I mean, did Mother Nature put the water there, or did our forefathers and foremothers send it this way?
Everyone historically had a hand in it. But you're correct, back several generations, Benita Springs was the end of the earth for Lee County, because there was nothing else, you know, we were right next to Collier County. There was nobody down here, there was no one that was impacting. A lot of things were handled simply because the population's so low, geographically, we're so far away from Fort Myers. So now that the population's increased, and now that there are, is a significant focus on water management, a lot of those historical decisions are either being rethought, or they're having to be completely revised to accommodate the existing condition.
So I'll go back to it, I'll ask it again. What do we do to cure these past ills? What would be a logical first step of many?
In my mind, it's multi-step. I think that you hit on the inter-agency portion of it, where we need to work with other counties, the Water Management District, other municipalities, so that from a macro standpoint, we have the water flowing in the correct location, to the correct location. From a micro perspective, we really need to figure out from each site, how is that water going to be handled? And how are we going to discharge that water off the site? You had talked about when somebody doesn't have a discharge, they don't really have to look at stormwater fees. That's a heck of a standard, but you also have to create that standard. So you're looking at something that is, I'm not going to say impossible, but it's very difficult to establish, and very expensive to establish. So I would take that report that you have, because it's a good basis for historical flows, work with the other agencies to have water start to flow that way, but then we also need to look at our standards to make sure that we're doing everything we can with Benita Springs. So this is not something that was created overnight, and it's definitely not something that's going to be solved overnight, but if we don't start now, it's going to be that much longer before we see any real positive effects.
Let me ask a question about the approval process of stormwater. Do you understand the sound of this?
Could you repeat the question, please? We can't hear you.
He's looking at the approval process for the Water Management District.
Yeah, on a major project, we don't get the stormwater details.
Correct.
Okay. The developer has developed five pounds of potatoes in his five-pound sack.
If we're lucky.
Okay, he filled it up. Now he goes, and he's presented a plan. He goes to Stormwater Management District, and there's not enough area for retention, or retention. So he has to revise his plan. And you're saying that doesn't come back to the zoning with the new concept? Or what's the status quo that happened? And has that ever happened?
Two things happen, and it depends on how this travels. If someone is reducing the number of units they're building, or someone's reducing the square footage, and it's not really impacting buffering, impervious space, meaning creating more impervious space, or creating off-site impacts, then it wouldn't necessarily have to come back to you. Sometimes it rises to the level of an administrative amendment. Occasionally, it rises to the level of a public hearing. But most of the time, what you'll see is, is developers have provided enough flexibility in those plans, which I think we've all discussed, so there really is not an impact that would rise to that level. The traditional way to handle this is an increasing level of sophistication and detail as the application's proceed down the line. You'll see the least amount of detail in a complaint amendment, and the most amount of detail in a development order. The discussion and the frustration I think we've seen is, some of those details that we've seen in the development order are essential for zoning approval. And without that detail in front of you, it's very difficult for you to figure out if it's going to be, borrowing the phrase, a yarn shop or a gas station. And that's purely appropriate. And when you start answering those questions and providing that detail, some of this water management information needs to follow along. One piece of many that you're going to see that you're currently not seeing, if we start moving these details forward. But you're correct, without seeing it, without somebody putting pen to paper or mouse to screen...
Sometimes what we say we don't get...
Yes, sir.
But it's like that.
They still have to...
It doesn't change the concept.
Correct, correct. And if it does change the concept, you do see it.
One thing we could do, because the mayor asked a very good question, we didn't really answer. What do we need to do about our standards? Now, I could give you a quick-term fix, and then a longer one. Quick-term, we should immediately adopt the standards of like Collier on release rates and all that, because they have much lower release rates. And that's already something that's, they're doing and have been doing it. So that right away would put anything that's new ahead of where we're at now, here. And I think the Irma flood and the Little flood show that we need a lot of help. Then what we would need to do at later this year, or next year, whenever you want to do it, is hire a good hydraulic stormwater management firm to come in and look at those rates of Collier, and see what we need to do to upgrade them further. And that would also include retention and all that, which, if you lower the release rate here, by definition, going to retain more water on the site. But Collier's been doing that, so that's a fairly quick fix that our staff could do if we gave them that direction.
John, I mean, I like that, Fred. I like that. John?
The only thing I would highly recommend is when we start looking at standards, we really look at how the new standards are going to integrate with older development. What you don't really see are problems, you do see them, but too much, I'll say they're more straightforward to fix, problems with gated communities.
Yeah, and on that issue is, if we get to this citywide stormwater management taxing district, whatever you want to call it, some of that money could be used to go into existing developments with their permission, and help them reduce their release rates, probably not get as good as the new ones would have, but if you made an improvement at all, it would be a step in the right direction.
So let me ask a hard question, but here, here again, we're all here, and I'm just asking. If there's a way to show, to prove, that traditionally over the years, water was specifically sent to Benita Springs based on X, Y, and Z, rather than us have to deal with it financially on our own, is there a way to share the cost?
Generically speaking, yes. But that's, you addressed the first topic that you've had on that, at your last meeting with the Logan Road discussion. And it's not going to be the last discussion you're going to have, even on that road. Depending on which jurisdiction, depending on what you need to do, there's been a lot of work that's been done that's altered stormwater. And to remove that or to alter that, it's going to take a lot of work to be done in the future. So I think it's entirely appropriate to expect someone to share the cost, and there might be portions of it that are born by Benita Springs, simply because of what the actions of the city, or it could entirely be another entity based upon their actions. I think you're going to see quite a mix.
And Peter, one thing I would add is, as we know, Beaver is pretty well has that doped out. Not in terms of who did what necessarily, but what used to be. You know, one example is out by Lake Trafford, and if you get the strand that comes down from that, a lot more water far east used to go. He's got a lot of that in there. In my view, a lot of it comes back to the Water Management District. Because, you know, and obviously the counties as well, but a lot of it comes back to the Water Management District in having them, and I know you and Fred particularly, I have the sense of a trying there, but to build on that relationship, to absolutely have them own that issue... But to build on that relationship, to absolutely have them own that issue, I think that's just appropriate.
I agree.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to point out another little thing. I know Deputy Mayor Flynn has talked about this himself before, but there is a big difference between the stormwater design criteria in Collier than there is in Lee. There always has been. Collier requires a much greater storm to flood the roads. I think the design I heard the other day was five years, it's okay after that to flood the roads here. But Collier's 25. So there's, now that, and they're both in South Florida Water Management District. So there's a lot, there's some blame you could pass up to the people that used to run all the area that was in Benita before it became a city. Because that, we were in that lower level of standard across the whole county than what Collier has. And I'm not holding them up as being the, what do you call it, the Academy Award winner for stormwater design, but they at least did better in some areas than we did, so.
The other leg on this screw, I know some jurisdictions are looking at is, I don't know whether we should or not, but increase in the height requirement. I think Estero's looking at a foot over what would normally be required.
Part of that's going to be required under the changes to our flood elevation building code. You're looking at an additional foot that's going to be added, but...
Where's that coming from?
I know it's coming through...
That requirement?
Yeah, it's coming through...
Sorry.
Yeah, fuck. Building code.
Oh, we have, we're looking at it ourselves now, you're saying.
The state is. Is already implementing.
All right, thank you.
But I know that some people are looking at going above and beyond. But that goes into the question of, how do you integrate your whole evaluation and stormwater treatment process? Because just, if you have vacant property, it's very easy, elevate the building.
No, I'm not saying it's a solution, I'm just saying it may be something.
But it is definitely something you want to consider, yeah.
So we're talking now about a foot where the state is higher than it's been traditionally, but doesn't that, so that solves one problem, but creates others?
Correct.
Yeah, right, it doesn't really.
Correct.
Yeah.
It really is...
It solves the problem from where you're building, creates a problem next door.
Yes, sir. And that's, and I will say that our single-family houses are probably the biggest stormwater problem we have on a micro level today. How do you balance the current FEMA regulations with houses that were built in the 60s and
So I guess I'd recommend Dave, I don't know. There was a lot there, I like it, it's good. Maybe we're in violent agreement, but, yeah, Fred.
Well, I...
Elijah, what next step I would like to...
One other thing, and I think I know the mayor can appreciate this, because he was down waiting around with his flip-flops on and all that.
That was the first couple of days till I saw the fish.
Well, that was the Little Flood, the Little Flood and the Big Flood. But especially in the Big Flood, if, when you drove west of I-75 down Beach Road, till you hit just a little bit beyond Imperial Parkway, the land to the north, generally speaking, had over a foot of water standing on it, and it stood on it for probably three weeks after the flood. So to me, one of the things we should at least consider doing is, anybody who wants to develop that land, they need some extra special consideration. Because what they're going to do is go in and fill that land up to where it's a couple feet higher than the water was standing. So all that water that was standing there that was storage or part of the river is now got to move someplace else. And you can only keep doing that a few more times. Every time you do it, you make it worser. Now, it's a small percent, but those percentages over the years have paid off to where we have a bigger problem than we had before they did it.
Well, isn't one takeaway Fred's idea about release rates a specific takeaway? That seems to me.
Well, I think one takeaway would be that we should adopt something that says, at least where you're along that river and there was one foot of water standing after Irma, and some of it was even in the Little Flood, that community development will look at that, even though it's normally South Florida Water Management, we got to do, we got to look at it and really come down on the developer. And I think the other one is, do the other takeaways, right away, adopt Collier County release standards and all that as an interim step, not the final step, that makes things better.
What, the current standard is you're balancing the post-development runoff rate that's equal to, but definitely not greater than, the pre-development rate. And so the theory is, you're not making the condition any worse. Of course, you're engineering a solution, and the discharge location is, could be different. So there's obviously impacts that that calculation doesn't provide. So looking at this decreased discharge rate is probably a very appropriate step.
Let me just say this, as an engineer, and I've got a better one sitting beside me, one of the places that we're getting gamed is that thing that John just said, because it's, that thing of, can't be worse than historically the discharge of the site, and there's all kind of latitude in the way an engineer approaches that, that you can come up with one answer versus another. And so you really want to, you want to tighten the heck out of that.
You might want to consider raising the storm event or lowering the intensity, that storm event over time. A 25-year rain event over 12 days is going to be a lot less released than a 25-storm event over five days, so.
Well, that, I think the question you're asking is almost the starting point. Because coming up with a couple of tweaks here and there may carry you through for a season, but if you really want to answer the question, that's the question that you need to answer, because all of your regulations are going to flow from that standard.
Well, we should consider changing the standard, and I agree with Fred, on an interim basis for all future developments being promulgated now.
That discharge rate.
And then when we get the final stormwater management plan in 2020, we can amend it. But in the meantime, you're making things much better and not promoting as much damage with future development if you institute a change.
And there's probably one other area that needs to be worked on, and that could be a little longer, but most of these design criteria are, have omitted one thing, and that is, when we get to floods, the ground's already 100% saturated, and they're allowing for some soaking in. And there's no, you can't soak in, so it makes it worse than the analysis they run. So all those little loopholes need to be done. But the first thing is, pick up what Collier's got, because we can do that quick, and then we got to bring in a good quality stormwater management firm, and ideally, one that's not wedded to this area, because somehow, they have conflicts because they work for the developers, and developers will want the least costly thing adopted by us.
Is anybody opposed to that?
No.
Okay.
That's like posing mother.
Yeah, right, right. Thanks, John. Do you have anything to add, or?
No, sir. I think this is the beginning of a long discussion, so...
Right. Oh, yeah. Thank you, John.
Mr. Mayor.
Back to you, sir.
That concludes my list of what was sent to me. So if there's any other questions you all want to raise, I think the takeaway is that there are a couple short, quick turnaround fixes that we can provide to you on the double dipping on density and the clip-pro-call on variations. I think if you want at Wednesday's meeting to provide direction for me to propose how to revise the PD, to address new PDs moving forward, and old PDs, as we discussed today, to try to prevent them from sitting out there forever. I think those were the big takeaways. And then the largest lift would be at a minimum rewriting Chapter 4. You're still being tied to Lee County's language.
And that's one you said was cobbled together from lack of...
There's Band-Aids and new stuff, and it really is an outdated land development code. That will take a longer process than tweaking the PD zoning. But you, to me, the PD is an interim, and the longer term would be the land development code, Chapter 4, and then looking to see if there's any consistency issues with the other chapters. 4 needs the big lift.
Dave, I missed what you said. Were you saying on Wednesday you're going to propose something on this deviation standard?
I was going to ask for direction from the City Council for me to do that. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I thought we had consensus on that before. Earlier in the meeting.
There's one other area I mentioned to Dave Ferriac when we were in at the break, and that is, as an interim solution, interim, there was an ordinance that was drafted on what had to be submitted by a developer, and it may have been a little bit too detailed, but it was put in the language of where engineers, architects that prepare this stuff understand it. And I would suggest that you look at that, dust it off, tweak it a bit. David said he wanted to look at it again, and that would be something that could be done fairly quickly, so that we would get more information than we're getting now.
So I agree with that. My recollection, though, Fred, Fred, that just said an acre or more? I would just have it.
That can be part of tweaking.
Yeah, I would start from any plan development.
I'll forward the draft over to David.
And the reason I asked Fred if I could look at it, when I looked at it about a year ago, I didn't have an appreciation for the PD problems that you were looking at, and I'd like to review it from that perspective.
Right. But if we haven't had a consensus, I think we already have. If we could have some suggested language on that deviation that we talked about earlier today on Wednesday, I think that would be good.
Well, a double consensus.
Pretty simple.
Yeah, exactly.
Triple, right, exactly. And there again, if anybody is opposed, I hate to say opposed, but now's the time to speak. Fred.
I think we could take a little bit more time and talk about this proper notice in these neighborhood meetings, because even when it's not a neighborhood meeting, I think our notices that we tend to send out, which comply with law, are a bit thin, and I think we should go deeper, more feet away, more property owners away and all that. And I think that would be a very good thing. The more information that the public, who are the stakeholders, because they've already invested here, can have, the better off we all are, and the better job we as council people can do, because we'll hear from more constituents about a lot of things, and we hear about it, but it's too late. It's already taken care of, been done and all that, so.
Now, Fred, I agree with that, and you put the sign, we follow the law, so let's make that clear, we follow the law. But like you said, if somebody doesn't see the sign or the sign's removed, what are we doing in addition to putting a sign on the property?
I think...
There's nothing additional required.
There's a directive.
There is a directive.
Yeah, but it's limited to so many feet from or so many property owners, and you just go, more is better, because it gets the word out more, you know?
I just received this, just opened it up this weekend. This is a courtesy notice of a proposed zoning action within 375 feet of property you own. And it's all the downtown, you know, this kind of thing. But I'm just saying, as we're talking about this, as a property owner, I just opened this this morning as a notice.
Right, I appreciate that. So 375 feet.
But there's a public notice in the paper, isn't there, as well?
Yeah, but who reads, who in the heck reads the legal notice in the paper?
Oh, I do every...
You do, Fred.
No, I don't.
Come on, Fred.
No, 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 I don't even, I don't even do that when I drill down. So I just think that number is, I mean, 370, I mean, we ought, it really...
In certain parts of town, absolutely.
Right, yeah.
And that downtown, Old 41's got a development association. They ought to be out circulating that information to all the people in that area.
And you think about maybe, I guess you'd call it northern Old 41, certainly downtown, but northern Old 41, 375 feet, you might not actually be in contact with anybody that you're noticing.
I think they will expand that distance to make sure they got somebody, but it's still, I would call it, thin, as far as what you're...
Very thin.
Or annex, certain annex parts in the city are within 375 feet of just Gulf, I mean, that's it.
Right, right, right. We did a comp plan, we did a municipal code for comp plan amendments, but it relates to what used to be called small scale. Now I don't believe these from the small scale anymore, but we'll get that. But we've never extended that to larger scale. So we have like, I believe, 500 feet, it's a small scale amendment, but they're like the only one, we never went and broadened that for bigger amendments like expedited review or city amendments. And that's a council policy call.
I think just everybody has a pretty good feeling going back to the best practice idea. What has happened is, there have been certain applications where we go above and beyond when it comes to the advertising and the notice. But the main focus was to make sure that you didn't trip yourself up from a procedural standpoint going forward. What you'll see in a lot of other jurisdictions, almost what you would consider the best practice here, is where the applicants send out certified mail, and they provide the receipts of who actually received these letters, and those that did not receive it obviously come back, that have been returned, and you know what percentage of people have read the notice and what percentage of people haven't read the notice. So the distance requirement, how you send it out, who sends it out, those are all things that, in other jurisdictions, they have gone above and beyond what we currently do.
Do you not send it certified?
We do not, we have a, the applicant provides several sets of mailing labels from the property appraiser, and a map showing what properties were included in that list, and then we mail the letter out, we'll, our staff will fold them and put it in the envelopes and send them to the property owners.
David, my notes also said from earlier today that one other thing we had a consensus on besides this deviation point, was this point to move sooner rather than later, of moving this Section 3 stuff into 4 on, are you going to do that for Wednesday as well?
That was, that's going to take a little longer...
Oh, is it?
...than the quick fix.
Okay.
But that was the medium timeframe, in being able to rewrite the PD zoning to incorporate the architectural stuff.
One...
Are we looking for guidance on Wednesday if y'all want me to do that?
One other thing that I think most everybody on council and zoning would agree with, and that is, and some, we always learn from our mistakes, but I want to know, what have we done to fix it so that ugly house right on Benita Beach Road, the new one that looks like a garage glorified, so that that can't happen again on Benita Beach Road or 41 or Old 41? Anything that's a major threat. I mean, that is ugly, ugly, ugly. And it's so, we must...
Yes, I missed it.
You're lucky.
You're lucky, yeah. It's located where on?
It's closer than a billboard.
It's located by Westbrook. It's in the, Westbrook and Benita Beach Road.
It was that orphan lot in front of Westbrook.
It was a neighborhood called Eastbrook, and it's right at the entrance of Eastbrook.
South side of...
And property has some very interesting land use paths, John.
There was an application that was denied.
Commercial.
The property was still designated as ag, and it was permitted to have a single-family home, which, a modular home, which is what was installed there, is considered a single-family. And that is how that particular residence wound up on that particular property. In terms of how we restrict residential development or certain types of developments, or at least the appearance of development along Benita Beach Road, we have done quite a few things, use-wise, landscape-wise, design-wise, through the Benita Beach Road overlay and through different land development code changes. There are certain changes in terms of the fact that a modular home is treated the same way as a single-family home, that is a state statute, that we do not have the ability to supersede. So the ability for somebody to put that modular home where a single-family home is permitted is something the state has protection. What it looks like is something we can look to do.
Let me ask you a question. Was that under section, that was not a plan development, I'm assuming, it was...
No, it was not.
That's standard zoning.
Correct.
So our, sorry, excuse me. So our 26 pages of standards, didn't make that look better?
Well, our 26 pages of standards don't really go towards the architectural for a single family residence.
Oh, just commercial.
But we could have, I think on Benita Beach Road, that there ought to be something where we can, we could have at least had it hid by landscaping or something. It's, and I'm not being critical that we made the mistake, I'm just saying, the best thing to do is learn from it and do whatever we have to do so that kind of stuff can't happen again.
And that was one of the recommendations that came out of the DPZ workshop. So you should be seeing something before, yes, sir.
John, when you're on Benita Beach Road, don't you have to submit that to the visioning study for approval?
You, yes. But when that modular was initially permitted and installed, that was not one of the requirements.
Excuse me. Is there, it's kind of off the subject, I guess, but is there something that as a city we can do to buffer it with landscaping?
Of course, but the area that you have is right of way is rather limited there, that's not being used for water management. And you, if you wanted to go onto the property, the property owner would have to authorize. But you could always.
We could address it with them and ask them. You may be willing to do that.
Rog, not to mention the barren wall next to it that goes.
The what?
The barren wall that goes toward the highway. It's in the same area.
But the barren wall looks better than your house. Well, I wanted to ask Mr. Ferriac a question here because this thing about compatibility, and I have been dealing with this because it's in my district. Well, it is and it isn't. The racetrack gas station, which is the corner of Benita Grande and Benita Beach Road, it had, it had a compatibility problem with Worthington because at night, even though, and John and I went out with a light meter and all that, and they're within their lighting standards, when you are 800 feet away in a home, if you happen to have a view towards that station, it's like you're looking into a searchlight. Even though if you go one foot to the edge of the property, they've got one foot candle of light, but looking at it at night, it's terrible. The other thing about it in the daytime, you've got these people in four, $500,000 homes that look across a golf course and look at the racetrack and they have a clear vision of it and it's hurting the resaleability. They've had people walk in, people to buy a home, they're happy with the price, they're happy with the location, and as soon as they go in the back of the house and look out to sliders or go out on the lanai and see it, they turn right around and walk away. So that, so there's a case of where you have, the county is where the racetrack is built in their jurisdiction. You got to city and there was, it's one of those things that just is a problem that happens when you have one jurisdiction abutting another one. And that's, but that's something that we probably need to look at that ourselves because that sure, that was across the road, no one would have ever guessed it, but it's there. And so there are solutions and I've been working with them on it, but it's not a, the mayor, I think, has had his encounters with some of the people there. So, you know, they think that the racetrack should pay to fix all that.
Because it's not the county commissioner's fault and then, but it's not, but it's our fault.
It's everybody.
No, it's the mayor's fault and the city councilman Ford's fault. I mean, you know, in their minds.
He said that.
They do have good gas and a good front.
Just to change the topic, one of the takeaway, I think there was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting of having a, I don't know if it's the zoning board or a committee of the zoning board, whatever Larry or you, Peter, were mentioning. I think that would make a lot of sense, working with staff and working with David within a certain period of time to follow up on various of the consensus items we had earlier today. If that makes sense to everybody.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Is there a consensus on looking at a neighborhood meeting requirement in the land development code or?
I would say, from my point of view.
And I'll put that on the list for Wednesday as well as my ask.
There again, anybody opposed?
No. I thought we had covered that.
Yeah, okay.
Didn't have it on my list as a consensus.
Well, another one I had was a halfway ground to accommodate everybody and have more transparency with respect to ex parte. Not that we prohibit it, but further to Amy's point, so there's more clarity about what's happening in these meetings, so we have a more complete record.
Can I carry on on that point? Because I've been sitting here troubled about something in the notion of this quasi-judicial nature of appearing people in the zoning board and when it's a zoning issue in front of the council. Notice the whole notion of a judicial process is case and controversy in that both sides will be vigorously presented to the person making a decision. And my observation of the quasi-judicial process as it deals with zoning is that one side is vigorously presented, that's the person who wants to develop. But the public interest side, I've never, I haven't got a clear handle on exactly how we get that other side thoroughly in front of the zoning board and in front of the council. And if we're going to go the direction that the public cannot bring their feelings about it directly to you elected council members, I don't think too many people write to the zoning board, but the council members, how do we build into the process that it really is both sides and on the other side is what's in public interest? I suppose you could say, you could have the staff have a responsibility to vigorously present the public interest. But in the absence of that, I don't see how you have a fair, balanced judicial type quasi going maybe with you. So maybe you could explain to me how that happens, I don't know.
I don't think it's the, I have a serial concept. I think it's the application of your adopted rules and regulations to a particular piece of property that makes it quasi judicial. So you have staff that is doing an independent analysis of whether the application meets the land development code in the comprehensive plan. You have an applicant, if they disagree with staff, who will probably bring their own experts and say staff is wrong. And what I, in my history of doing this, if the neighbors feel strongly, they're going to show up with their lawyer and their experts. Most of the time, I'd say 99, maybe 95% of the time, things go through without neighbor opposition, not, or at least substantial neighborhood opposition. And in those instances where it's going to be substantial, they'll typically have representation.
Well, that of course assumes that they can afford to do so.
Yes.
That is always the problem with issues, that somebody with great financial interest that will have that, and if you have the other side that may be loosely organized and organized at all, and if the, I just, I'm responsible for making that decision, I want to make sure that I've heard a balanced assessment of what the law requires because it's the law that I have to apply. And it's not just this law, it's state law, the constitution and the rest of it that I have to, for instance, abutment of the law or that supply hazard requires of those kinds of things. So I'm just, I'm not sure how we build that, that assurance into those of us who are making the decision, that we are hearing a fair analysis of both sides. I pretty much know where the developers coming from, they want to develop. Question about that. And so I want to make sure that if they're, if something that they're saying doesn't exactly fairly represent the rule, is it going to be something the other side will raise that to me or am I responsible for reading through this and trying to do that myself?
That should be staff in my law room. And the role of staff is to do an independent analysis of the comprehensive plan and land development code to ensure that the application meets those requirements regardless of what the developer says. Our role is to almost do a peer review. In fact, Brent Spain is my law partner in Orlando, and I, when we look at these applications, we look at them as if we're challenging them, as if the neighbors have hired us to attack this application. And so hopefully between staff's independent analysis and our review of the application, we're getting to that point where what you're asking for is that somebody is doing a straight-up analysis of what the requirements are.
I was going to make, I think this is not a bad idea. Deputy Mayor Flynn said he thought that what should happen is if a developer wanted to talk with one of us, that we ought to have staff there. And that way, there's kind of a record and somebody on staff hears the one, two, three and all that. So I would submit that if you have some citizens and if, on the controversial projects, there are some, that all you do is say, okay, I'm willing to meet with you, but I'm going to have staff there. They're going to hear it. And if maybe there's two or three of you that all have the same thought, then instead of it just being one with one's resident, you bring three or four in, but the staff hears it, there's a kind of a record of it and all that. So that way it would be kind of, what do we call it, close to equal.
I think what Barbara's bringing up is the substantial competent evidence issue. And you may have, you have an applicant and that applicant will produce their substantial competent evidence. Staff as well as Mr. Ferriac will present their substantial competent evidence. But what if, as a zoning board member or as a city council, you don't necessarily agree or feel that the substantive of the issue, because some types of things become non-issues, then for a decision maker, it becomes a bigger issue because none issue is not being discussed. At what point, as a zoning member, do you go and do additional investigatory by asking those questions of the applicant or of staff? Or alternatively, hold additional, you know, ask for the records to be open to get additional information? Is that more?
That was my next question on that, was, and you anticipated it quite well, was that if I have a concern that I don't think has been in the written record that's been sent to me or addressed, is it coaching the need to ask the staff or you to clarify something?
During the hearing, yes.
But before the hearing?
Where you get in a little bit of trouble is if you're doing your own independent research before the hearing. Because technically, you're supposed to base your decision on the evidence that's presented during the hearing. So it's fair game for you to say to the applicant, I don't understand how you got to hear or to say to a staff member or any experts that we're using to say, I don't understand your position here, can you please explain it? Where you need to be careful is that you don't come across as a prosecutor. There's a line of cases where a board member or a city council member or a mayor were so aggressive that the record reflected that he actually acted as a prosecutor rather than as a judge. So you've got that line that you need to be careful with as well.
Well, similarly, the judge in sort of areas, the judge has his own basis of knowledge. And certainly all of us have a basis of knowledge about what's in the code and just on the step, what's in the law. Can we ask questions from our own expertise, from any people that are?
It's not expertise, though. You can ask questions. Your questions are not competent substantial evidence. Your remarks are not competent substantial evidence because you're a decision maker, you're not introducing evidence. But you have every right to say, I'm an engineer and I don't understand this ratio that you got here, please explain it to me. That's a fair game. I'll give you another example of what's not a fair game. I was representing Hampton Inn on a project on 38 in Walton County. There were about 1,000 people that showed up against me and my client. And one of the county commissioners came up to me, excuse my French, this is the direct quote, we're going to kick your ass tonight. As an elected official at a quasi judicial hearing, you don't want to say that to somebody who's involved in the hearing. It shows a fundamental lack of fairness and lack of bias.
What happened?
It looks like your ass.
No, it was a weird, we're going to do that to you tonight.
I had two things. One is I think Fred's solution there is something worth, I agree with on the ex parte part. Second thing on, I prefer to call it balance in presentation that Barbara brought up, I just wanted to follow up on that. And I give you an example. I think what happens often is staff gives their view as experts, all right? But in getting that view, we don't get potential, we don't get both sides of the issue. So it's not an even-handed presentation. And I'll give you a perfect example. You know, about a year ago, there was an issue out on the beach where a person had an air conditioner and it was built too close to the house next door. One thing led to the other, without getting into the details, but certain people had to pay a fine, not a fine, had to pay to have that moved because it wasn't in compliance with the law. All right? That law about setbacks for air conditioners was the subject of, it was adopted, I think, in 2010 or 2011 by the previous city council. So obviously, it was the subject, it had to go through LPA, it was the subject of two meetings of council. It's a long deliberative decision to get that law applied. About four months after, two months after we had the debacle on the beach, there's a planned development that comes in. And guess what? They got a deviation request, not just for one building, but for 40 buildings, all of which are in, I'm going to use the word violation of that code requirement, all right? And they asked for a deviation. So staff came in and they said, you know what? We're for the deviation. And I recollected, the justification was Collier doesn't have any provision like this, Collier is more lean to whatever. And I was sitting there saying, they're redoing what is basically six months of city council deliberation from a few years ago and not even presenting that. And I thought the decision makers were therefore not put in a position where they totally understood the reason for those setbacks as adopted by the city council a few years ago. Instead, it was presented as, we're for this deviation, here it is, that's our expert opinion. And no one was presented with any information on the other side of it. So once again, it's not what side you're on, it's presenting information to the policymakers and the zoning board so that it can be weighed.
Point, counterpoint.
Yeah. Yeah, so you make a real decision as opposed to just what staff believes. So I think there needs to be more balance in there now. One related question is, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but it's a question I have, are there not jurisdictions where staff doesn't make an expert opinion recommendation? I'm not suggesting we do it, I'm just asking as an academic thing.
Very rare.
Very rare.
I've run into, and I practice statewide, as you know.
Right.
Maybe two jurisdictions where they were directed not to make a recommendation.
Okay, so I'm not suggesting we go that way, but in the context of their recommendation, please present the other side of it. So if something can be built in, that would be great.
Well, especially since when you come as a public, just as a citizen to the zoning board and something like this, you're sort of told you're not an expert.
Right.
So your input cannot be considered by the person sitting on the air. So if you can't afford to go out and hire yourself an expert, how do you get the fact that there is disagreement with this? And reasons that may be just reasonable reasons or maybe they're totally stupid reasons, but how do you get that information into the process of making the decision? So at the end, it's a fair decision for the people who are opposed as well as the people who are in favor. And below, I mean, to me, it's all has to fit within the law. Although when they're coming to the zoning board, typically what they're asking is, we don't want you to provide exactly what the hearing said, what the law requires, we want a variance or we want an exception or we want our development to have many options that we would give if we were just an individual. I'm just concerned that how you make sure that that is done in a way that is fair to both sides here on your.
It's a good question.
I, oh, go ahead, I'll read. I'm just going to let people know that lunch is ready so we can work through lunch, grab a plate, whatever you want to do.
Neighbors can always be fact witnesses. So it's not that the testimony, because it is sworn testimony, the issue is a sworn testimony, substantial competent evidence. And if it's an opinion, the opinion has to come from an expert, which again, we're very liberal in our bodega of experts here. So we had one person one time for water sampling, collection of water samples, she's not a biologist or anything else, and the judge upheld a denial on that basis. not a biologist or anything else, and the judge upheld a denial on that basis. Kind of weird, but it worked. So I mean, if you're a fact witness, the decision makers, whether it's the zoning board or city council, can hear it with facts of the situation. How does it impact your property? Because factually, you know your property. How it affects, you know, but you can't go out and necessarily be traffic unless you have the expertise and traffic.
How about if you say, this is what the law says, and this is what, I believe he's not, this is the law.
Well, again, you wouldn't be interpreting the law, but either, you know, you could put us out there and say, we should be considering the statute, you know, whether or not they say, yes, we do know, no, that makes it a fact issue.
Can I ask a question about traffic? So we have experts come in here, they're experts with respect to traffic. So let's say, I'm a citizen, and we're talking about traffic on a corner, and I go out there every day. I've almost been hit five times, I see buses backed up, I see, whatever, traffic problems, all right? I come to the city council, I'm told I'm not an expert on that. Do I need to be an expert to get up and talk about what I saw?
No. In fact, I teach a, how to do quasi judicial hearings.
Right.
And one, your example, literally is one that I use.
Oh, okay.
A layperson can testify about personal observations. There have been five accidents at that stop sign, the curve has a blind spot, things that they have, actual knowledge, what they can't testify to, the functional classification of this roadway is X. That requires an engineering degree. But factual information with personal observation, that's fair game.
So I think it'd be helpful, maybe as part of what this committee does, is that we have a more complete explanation to the public of the contours of that. Because I think people are coming here, and whether they're being told, they perceive that they're being told, for example, on traffic, I gotta be an expert, I gotta swear myself in, I gotta say I've done five of these things. That ain't the case.
Not a personal factual observation.
And there's a lot of nuance that's highly important, I think that's gotta come out.
Okay.
So people properly feel, properly feel they're part of the system.
And that's a good point. And that's really the local government's obligation, because the developer, if they're bringing in a lawyer, is they're gonna try to intimidate the layperson into not speaking.
Right.
So in making sure that playing field is level, letting folks know that factual observations are okay to relay.
So maybe that could be a takeaway for that group as well, if that's all right?
I have a question on the jurisdiction, I'm sorry, on traffic, actually. I understand that the developer comes before you, and there's a concern about traffic, and that the developer has the right to mitigate traffic concern. And if that leads to a change of character of the street or a byway, is that a legitimate cause for the neighbors to object to it? Does it change the character of the neighborhood?
I'm not sure if I'm envisioning what you mean.
Well, if you have a developer that goes in, and you have a two-lane highway, a two-lane road in front of you, and they're gonna put in this large development, and large development is done, is not, cannot be served properly by a two-lane road. So, but I explained it to you, that the developer had to say, well, I'm gonna fix it. And the only way to fix it is by putting a four-lane road. So if all the neighbors around you that road, it's changing the character of your neighborhood, it would be incompatible with the neighborhood, and they have to put a two-lane road in order to develop it.
Is that outside the neighborhood, or in the neighborhood?
It would be outside.
It's outside in the sense, it's a public road, so it's outside the neighborhood. It's eternal to a DRO. Well, it doesn't have to be, it could be anything. I mean, in case in point, it's what's happening in Pine Ridge down in Naples, where they're putting up new development, and they're saying, that has a certain character, that road, and now they're gonna put extra lanes and make it more like a highway. And it seems to be like the neighbors, they are gonna roll along the Pine Ridge Road rightfully are complaining about it. Is that a legitimate complaint to not approve of the development? That's my question.
I need to think through that one. I challenged a road being increased in Ocala through the foreign country. And I raised compatibility issues, and the applicants, they had it under contract, and the owner ended up withdrawing the application because of all the opposition. And I can't think of a circuit court case where that decision turned on increasing the size of a road outside of the community. I would guess that if there's existing right of way, that you wouldn't be able to object because you had existing right of way, and that's the purpose of having that right of way. But that's, off the top of my head, I don't have a black letter law answer.
I understand it's a state law that obligates, or gives the right to the developer to mitigate these types of problems.
On Amy's point, there was a case that came up years ago, when, well, probably back in the early 2000s, after the city had become a city. And they were going to widen Benita Beach Road, which was a two-lane road, and it turns out, they widened it out to four lanes, they were gonna do a lot of development. As part of that, city council actually extracted from the developer the construction of that privacy wall of Worthington Country Club along Benita Beach Road. I don't know, I think Pat McCord had a hand in that. So that, that kind of, a little bit talks about what Amy's talking about, because they said if you make that a four-lane road, whereas two-lane, there's gonna be more noise, gonna be more traffic, we're gonna lose privacy. And so they built an eight-foot-high privacy screen, I think it's about a half a mile long.
Yes, there was a series of development agreements, where there was additional revenue provided to the city, plus an extension of a road, which was completely isolated and expansion, because they got a percentage of the amount of what they cost them. And then there was what they called a super impact fee, I just gave that term, where they also paid a bonus, in fact, if they're public on the regular impact fees, they paid an additional.
Would now, would now be a good time to have some lunch?
Yeah.
Totally, if you're hungry, Larry. Brad, I'm gonna charge you one.
I'm about to drill down.
I know Peter's hungry.
But I didn't think she was using currency, I thought she was using average impact and extension road.
I think it's been a great time to spend.
Gibby, what's going on with the Everblades?
Okay.
Everblades. Yeah, second round now?
David, thank you so much for a really instructive, instructive morning. As I understand the instructions to the zoning board, we will have the zoning board or a group meet with staff, work with David and his firm on what was discussed here today. I would suggest that as a process matter, what I'll do is pick two zoning board members to work with them, they'll get two or three issues under their belts, come to the whole zoning board, we'll have a meeting, so everybody's involved, and we get a full consensus. The goal being, we should try to be as, as close to unanimous as we can be. And then, within 90 days, we'll all get with council and give you our best recommendation. Do I have that correct?
Yes, sounds good to me.
So, one more thing, has everybody been heard or wants to be heard? Is there anything else we should do or say, anybody? Staff? David, you wanna?
I just wanna say thank you. I thought it was really productive, and the interaction, I thought, really added a lot to discussing the issue, so thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great, thank you.
David, would it be worth, you're kind of summarizing again, what you think we are in ARC or ARB?
All right. On the ARB issue, or ARC, excuse me. What I was going to do is request on Wednesday, direction from the city council to amend Chapter Four, to add architectural and design standards, pretty much modeled from Chapter Three, and try to roll it into Chapter Four. That would allow the zoning board and the city council to review applications pursuant to those criteria. I did not hear direction to also create a design review board. And if I did, if that needs to be clarified, please let me know, and we can get that direction on Wednesday as well.
I think, Fred, do you have a view on that, or?
Yeah, I, I, one view I have is if we are gonna get involved in design reviews, we've gotta have at least two, as Estero recommended, only because, it's like I said to David at the break, in your firm, when you have some heavy duty thing, even though you're the head guy, and you get maybe 80%, you're getting a lot of good stuff from your other guys. And he said, absolutely. So architects, architecture is a subjective profession, it's not like engineering. You know, two divided by three is how many, how many decimal places you wanna blow out. So two, two architects is better than one, even if they're gonna do something, we may not need if they begin.
So what the working model is, then, that would be done at the zoning board with appropriate, whatever we do at the zoning board? Adding people, or?
Or, or, we could build in, just that we should make, do our best efforts to have at least two architects on the zoning board.
The only other option.
We have one now. Two.
Well, you have two, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We have two that are the highest in charge of that.
I'm not a Florida licensed.
No, I know. Yeah, neither is he.
Well, I don't know that much.
Yeah, no. So the only other point is, not for today, is like, what's in the 26 pages exactly? And I would assume at some point, that'd be part of your process.
Right.
It sounds good, but, you know, really haven't seen it applied.
Exactly.
I think the other view I have is, if we do have something called design review, if you have a developer that's got his act together, that developer comes in with renderings, site plans, elevations, all that stuff, that they should not be subjected to the same length of process that you could get into with a design review. Design review would be more for those people that don't have their act together, where you're kinda forcing to get their act together. That's just my thought.
But you want to do something, right now, the way we have everything set up, is we have a scheduled court hearing. Do you wanna have like a pre-hearing type schedule? In other words, we have the one that has the big requirements ahead of time for the actual hearings, but you want something more informal?
This is what you're gonna look into, right?
Right.
The details of this stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
But my, my biggest concern is if we have somebody that's got their act together, we don't want to cause their process to be as long and drawn out as those that are, not, don't have.
Well, in some ways, though, I think if they already have their act together, we may not like the path they're going down, so I don't agree with that, I don't think. I think that, you know, if they present a design that is not compatible with our vision, then they should be subject to the same review.
Give us an opportunity to, to think that through. A way of comment, I would say, when you have these neighborhood meetings, you're gonna be forcing people to have something to show up with, at the meeting. That's number one, Fred. So, number two, if we move the process forward, and take, and have a two-step process for arguments, that you have a preliminary approval and a final approval. The final approval being the development order. You're pushing things forward considerably. I would say it will be a lot faster than it currently is. But I think we should look at this, look at it, and let's see what everybody says, and we'll bring it before you.
The other thing to think about, and toward moving it faster, is to learn more, whatever you call it, a beauty book, or whatever, pattern book. So, in a way, it can take these 26 pages, here's basically what we're looking for with El Bolone, anything that makes it much more clear to people who are coming in with development proposals. So they don't have to get up in an endless web of, well, what exactly is these, are these 26 pages saying? But I mean, this is not all over the state, this is not recreating.
Peter, are you suggesting, or have you, I've heard, because you've had a lot of experience, obviously with the Estero.
Right.
Are you suggesting that as a model?
Well, there's plenty of people do it, Naples do it, does it, and, you know, and the reason I'm suggesting it is that, just look, I mean, just to take an example, look how nice that Chase Bank looks down on 41, above the gas station, all right? That was almost happenstance, if that happened, that's just the Chase style. But when you look around, other than that, we are far below the standards of north and south of us, and puts us at a competitive disadvantage. That's why I'm suggesting we look at this stuff. Otherwise, we're gonna be, you know, in the name of, we're for economic development, we're for anything. And we're not gonna attract the better developments. That's my view. But I'm not like dogmatic about it, I just think, why not look at what other people are doing and see if it makes sense? And I'm trying to streamline it, in my view.
I wanna mention something, somewhat off topic, that we're talking, you mentioned, talk about development.
Right.
There's word on the street that Benita is now anti-development.
Yeah, see, that's, that's the problem, right?
And, and, you know, I don't, I still like to think of Benita, and that we're slow and permitting, there's just a lot of stuff that goes on. And I always thought we were on a fast track for things like permitting.
Right.
And I always thought we were pro-development. Now, I understand we want to control where the development goes, but is that the right message we want to send to?
I'll tell you my view, and I've got two different things here. One is the permitting process that city council's not really a part of, right? But that's, you know, through BSU, the fire department, and our permitting office, right? So they have, they used to have a three-party agreement, BSU pulled out of that, unfortunately. But I think on this, this pro-development, anti-development thing is, to me, a lot of sloganeering, all right? Because the question is, what do you wanna be, and what do you mean by development? So, in my view, this is not, like, my parents had a little bungalow up at Catskills, right? They would die for anybody to come up there and develop anything. We're not in that position. We're in a position where the whole world is coming to southwest Florida. And what we've got, north and south of us, are governments that have standards that they're applying, they're not crazy high standards, they're standards that they're applying. And then we've got us. And I think we have to, in my view, to get the best development, or at least development like they're getting, put, have more transparency in this process, and have more clarity in the process. So, you know, if you believe development is, I'm open to anything anybody wants to do, and I don't care, don't necessarily you do, but if, if you believe development is anything anybody wants to do, we're okay with it, that's development friendly, well, where is that gonna get us?
So do, when the word on the street is, obviously not my street, but?
Right.
The street that you, you're on there, are they specific at all? Do they say all the zoning board is a main? That's just a statement. No, I understand that. But how are?
Not zoning, not the zoning board.
How are we anti-development? I mean, so permitting is one thing you mentioned. What else do they say?
Restrict, well, just that we're restrictive, and we're maybe too restrictive in some areas, but I think we're also wanna be, consider to be protective, protective of our, of our environment, our lands. Obviously, we have a huge traffic problem, we don't wanna do anything that's gonna add to it, so I don't know. do anything that's gonna add to it. So I don't know, I'm asking, I guess, the question. I hear, but, but, you know, I ask the question, nobody can really put their finger on it, except that a lot of projects get turned down. Now, I know, for example.
What projects?
Well, I don't, I.
What's, I've been here for a year and a half.
But I know, I know.
Nothing's been turned down.
Well, let me say this. I know that, for example, there are projects that the zoning board approves, and they get the council, and they get this.
No, no.
No, since I've been here.
Not since I've been here. I don't think.
Matter of fact, we disapprove one, and you reverse this.
Right.
And that was the Habitat.
Yeah.
That's the only one we've disapproved.
I don't know of a project that's not been approved.
The vote was as small as I can. And you thought, otherwise, it's great.
I'm not pointing the finger.
No, and I think it could be a concerted effort.
Roger?
By some. Look.
Right.
Let's just lay it out there.
Go ahead.
There's some that wanna change the zoning in the D R G R.
That's.
So the fact that we're holding firm on that?
No.
Boom! We're anti-develop.
That's what I agree, and I think everybody is. I hope everybody in the room agrees on it.
Yeah, right. So the problem from Orlando and Miami that wanna develop the D R G R, I'm less concerned what they, if they wanna spread that we're anti-development.
And I'll tell you, Mike and our constituents, all right, you know what happened when that extra space storage went up?
Yeah.
Are you kidding me, man?
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
So I think we can lose track, not you again, but people can lose track of who we're representing here. We're elected by the people of Benita Springs.
That's right.
And maybe, while we're trying to tweak here with all of the minutia, maybe they're feeling the pinch of that, you know, going through this different, you know, process here, we're trying to streamline it. Maybe that's some of their, maybe some of that that they're feeling, you know? I'm sure. Anytime you change, there's a little anxiety. Fred?
Yeah, my, my observation is that we're an evolving community. We're putting more emphasis on what I call the stakeholders, which are the people that already invested in the Benita Springs area and properties and businesses. But we have made strides in the last couple of years. Our good special counsel, Theriak, has complimented us on the big box store ordinance that was passed, that was under the old council, I believe. And then you, in, a more recent example was, and this was, I think, on my first year in council, I found out that we're gonna build a storage building on Ben, real close to Benita Beach Road, where you could see it. And we hopped on, got a zoning in progress, and to John Domer, Audrey, Sam Vincent, and a number of others' credit, they developed an ordinance on, sell storage buildings. And what you see now out on Burnwood Two, as I call it, the one that's on Beach Road, is the Cube Store. And that would hold its own anyplace, in the sterile, whatever. It's very nice compared to what it could have been had that not happened. So I think we're, we're going in the right direction.
If I may, I think a lot of changes that David Theriak is suggesting would be considered not friendly for the distressed builder. In other words, the person who, they find cheap property, they get the entitlements on it, and they flip it. That's the group that we are being unfriendly to. I think that might be a fair assessment, that you'd rather wait for a good project and get, know what you're getting, rather than just give somebody new speculative rights. And if it's, for that targeted industry, you probably would be considered unfriendly. But at that point, we don't know, and it's all speculation. And the question is, is it worth a gamble in the community? I mean, you're the policy decision makers who have to make that call, whether it is or isn't.
I would add one other thing to this. You have litigation pending that people are spinning. You're refusing to give the mine 2,000 residential units. So you're anti-development.
No, no.
You're refusing to say that your hands are tied, that four 20-story buildings should be built in Raptor Bay. So you're anti-development. I mean, and this is, this happens a lot when a jurisdiction changes their philosophy. I would say the prior council in entering into those agreements were a little more willing to allow development to occur without the same standards that y'all are trying to impose. And when that takes place, you hear, you know, not just your city, but other jurisdictions, when that shift occurs, you're suddenly anti-development. You're not anti-development, you're anti-bad development. You're actually pro-good development. And so I think part of it's.
I wanna clarify that that wasn't, I'm not talking about any specific project, and I haven't heard anyone say that that was not the right decision to not allow, or to disapprove those four high-rises. I haven't, the only people probably that
Nobody's ever.
Were in favor of.
Hasn't been, nobody's disapproved.
Nobody's disapproved.
Nobody's disapproved. They sued to
Nobody's ever said anything.
Take it out of our jurisdiction.
Right.
Nobody's ever said anything to me about that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
You know, the two big projects that we've produced for quite some time now, the residential development at 041 and Dean on the southeast corner?
Mosaic.
300 units or so. I have no idea what's going on there. Visually, nothing. And that, that was two years ago, I suspect. And then, secondly, the one out on Benita Beach Road on the north side of that, where Vanderbilt Beach ties in, the hotel and the expansion of the existing, you know, the presentation to our zoning board was, well, you gotta give us approval, because I wanna start building next week. Well, so far, nothing's happened. And if that's, if that's being unfriendly to developers?
No.
I think that's a different story.
No, those aren't.
But it concerns me that those two big projects, since I've been around, zeros happen.
I personally don't have specifics. I said the word on the street. I don't have any specifics, and I just don't want that to have that reputation. The question was, what street?
I think he was not saying the word, and he was just concerned it might be.
It's not my street.
It's my street.
We're built out. Anyway.
Anybody else who wants to be heard?
Another question for David. Many of us here sat through the presentation by D P Z on the Benita Beach Road workshop. And one of the things they talked about, seems to be one of the current buzzwords in city planning, is forum zoning. And the presenter was quite strong about, this is a new thing. The city of Miami has adopted forum zoning. I think Asheville, South Carolina has adopted forum zoning as it relates to specific projects that they could go in and sort of overlay this new forum zoning concept, which is driven mostly by architectural issues. Could you comment on that? Where, where do we stack up? How is our current P U D system and regulations, is that, is that forum zoning? Or is it close to it?
No, you don't. What they're doing, it's forum-based zoning, and it's relationship, really, to structures. You don't have that approach right now. It is the new FAD. Before that, it was traditional neighborhood, T N D. Before that, I mean, there's always the next wave that's supposed to be the newest and greatest and best. What I would do is look at what they're proposing. I wasn't at the workshop. And have them run real-life scenarios. If, if these are my regs, show me how these regs are gonna work to get me the result that I want. I don't care what you call the regs, forum-based, T N D. I wanna know, at the end of the day, when I apply it to DIRTT, what's the result? And so if you're, if you're sitting through those meetings, that's where I would push them to demonstrate that you're gonna get the, the end result that you're looking for. John?
I agree in the point that it doesn't matter what form a code takes, it doesn't make any better or worse. I presented, I forget how long ago it was now, and there needs to be another presentation coming back before the council, but talking about using the forum-based code downtown. The reason why I like that, especially the downtown